Um, we are gonna talk today about guild stuff. Cause that's what you do in a guild town hall type of situation, uh, which we are now firmly in. Hey, I'll, I'll even bring my camera on. That's, that's awesome for the streamers. Um, cause I know you really wanna see my face. Whatever. Um, so today, uh, we'll be talking with, uh, Ash and Barf and Tur Arts about, about, uh, events and about, uh, how you get into the guild and about how things are changing. Uh, and also with, uh, for raid team members and for raid team leaders, you will definitely wanna, uh, uh, listen up when Ash talks, cause he's got a bunch of helpful things for you, uh, as we get going. Um, in general, uh, I wanna welcome you if you, uh, let me start over. So I wanna welcome you if you're new, uh, for those guys that have been in the guild, uh, for a long time. Welcome to the, uh, town hall meeting and I'm sure you know what's, what we're about to do, right? Um, and a big thank you to the CTR officers, all of them. Uh, the guys that bring you in, the guys that help out raid team members, uh, the guys that help out whenever, that whenever they can, however they can. Thank you so much for all of your, um, help throughout the years. We've been around for now, what is it? Six and a half?
Six years.
It's over six. Um, so that's pretty amazing. We just had a good, uh, six year anniversary, uh, in January. So, um, you know, it's, it's, it's been a while. It's been, it's, it's been a minute that we've been around. So, um, and, and still awesome, still big, still active. And, uh, it's great to see all you guys here. Um, today I wanted to talk to you before, before the other guys talked to you. I wanted to bring up, uh, a couple of things. Number one, website. We're, we're, we're working on redoing a bunch of the website stuff and I know that, um, our man Maccus has been, uh, in the background, kind of, uh, debugging a bunch of things and working on a bunch of things and trying to make us move forward. Um, I am also working on trying to update the systems a little bit on the front end of things to make it a little bit, uh, easier for me to do things, easy for me to update stuff because whatever code they're using, I have no idea how to work it. Of course, I'm, I'm not a website guy. So, uh, if I wanted to make changes, then I have to like go through hoops or whatever. Um, so we're changing the front end a little bit, uh, the, and the backend, all the data stuff is being worked on as well. Um, and it's a continuing thing. Uh, well, you'll hear more about it, especially for raid teams, uh, momentarily. Um, one of the other things that we're also doing, so while, while I tinker with that, we've also kind of tinkered with, uh, the rules of the guild, not necessarily changing anything, uh, just kinda simplifying some stuff, making sure that it's updated. Because we still had things about mumble in there. You know, you remember those days, mumble? Uh, so we took some of that stuff out. We took a bunch of the, took a bunch of the, uh, the weight out of that, uh, very heavy document that is the, uh, CTR guild, uh, policies. Uh, and so we're simplifying it with a bunch of TLDRs and, uh, a bunch of the other stuff. But the, the core remains the same. Um, we are a, we remain a all ages, all tolerances guild. Um, we are for everybody and that means that we have certain tolerances that we just, you know, it kinda irks us. If you have a weird name that may have a double meaning that, uh, isn't, isn't polite, I guess. Uh, and that also means that, um, you know, if, if there's, there may be language issues or topic issues in guild chat. We may ask you to move it to, to DMs or move it to, I don't know, over to your own Discord or something like that. That is, that is one of those things where, you know, things get a little tight, whatever. Uh, and so we just try to make sure that you are aware that we try to, uh, make ourselves available to everyone of all tolerances and ages and, and things like that. And that will remain. Um, and then the rest of it is just, uh, don't be a jerk. Try to get along and follow our credo, which is, uh, which is, uh, community, teamwork and respect. Um, so make sure to honor that stuff as we move forward. And I'm sure that we'll all have a good time. Um, wondering if there's anything else? I think, I think that's it for now. Uh, let's see. I think we should go over to Barfolumu first. He is our, uh, our major domo. No, not that. This one. Uh, for, for all of the greeters, uh, the, those guys that bring you in. Uh, so Barf, if you would, please take it away.
Yeah, thanks, Pat. Um, so like he was saying, the greeters, the welcoming committee, whatever you wanna call them, are the officers that bring you into the guild. Um, and that is, uh, kinda, I'll, hmm, how do I word this? The, there's, as part of what Pat was talking about, about, you know, sort of simplifying some of the rules and sort of making things a little bit smoother, a little bit easier, a little bit more modern and up to date. Uh, we are changing some of the entry requirements for bringing your characters into Convert to Raid. And this is something that, uh, we think is gonna make things a lot simpler going forward. Um, you know, when they maybe add new things, new classes, new races, that sort of thing. So originally when Convert to Raid was founded, there were regular old races and classes. And there were death knights, which were the weird exception, and that was kind of it. So having a stipulation that, oh, you know, well, we're level 15 and you're all set. Uh, unless you're a death knight, get to level like 60 and then we'll talk, right? Like that. And that was kind of the rule. Then Blizzard hit us with the demon hunters and they start at a different level. They hit us with the allied races and they started at a different level. And then we sort of just kept compounding, you know, what the entry requirements were for each of these new groups of people. And then it turned out that there were like a million different things that you had to think of when you were, you know, creating, creating a character and trying to get them into the guild. So what we're doing instead, we're still doing that level 15 minimum, right? And that's gonna, that's gonna apply to like really most of the characters that we create these days. Um, for your death knights, your demon hunters, your allied races, all the other stuff, get to the point where you can leave your starting zone. That's all we're asking. So, um, basically if you can make it to Stormwind or a capital city, you're welcome in the guild at that point. You don't have, we don't have to worry about any of the other requirements and all that stuff is sort of going by the wayside. Uh, we did that first of all, because the rules in place, uh, currently were a little too complicated. And we expected them to get more complicated, the more Blizzard added to the system. So we figure this is gonna be something that's gonna sort of blanket like, yep, just hit level 15 and have the ability to like leave your starting zone, get to a capital city, that sort of thing. And we are gonna be set. Um, the other thing associated with cleaning things up on the website side and trying to make sure that everything's running as smoothly as possible. Uh, our application database is getting kinda big. Um, part of the, uh, solutions that were implemented to, uh, fix some of the problems that maybe the, the, the user end didn't necessarily experience. But I know the officers definitely, we're, we're seeing some, some little hangups here and there. Uh, part of that involved, um, you know, tidying up that database in, in, in a couple of ways. And at the end of the day, that may mean that you'll one day create an alt and ask to be brought into the guild. And the officer might ask you to make a new application because yours sorta, you know, kinda got disappeared somewhere along the way. Um, that's the only situation where you'll ever need to submit a second application. Um, sometimes we see people make new applications for their alts that are coming in. You do not need to do that. Your, your, the first application that you made is enough for all of your characters. That's, that's all you have to have is that first, that original application on file. The only time you'll ever need to resubmit one is if there was something on the backend that required that your paperwork got deleted or, or, or altered or something. Um, so generally speaking, we're trying to make it easier to get people into the guild. We're trying to keep our administrative side of things, uh, a little bit cleaner, a little bit more up to date. Um, and if you, if you ask an officer in the CTR LFO channel that we have set aside specifically for reaching out to officers, both in game and in Discord, um, if you reach out to an officer and I say, and you say to him, hey, I need an invite to the guild. And they say, well, we might need a new application from you. That's the reason for that. But, um, I wanna emphasize, you do not need to submit new applications unless an officer comes to you and explicitly tells you, hey, there was an issue and we need you to put in a new app. Outside of that, the first one you made is all we need.
Barf, uh, just to cut in real quick, cause Draven Dresden said something really funny in chat. Uh, said that my app did not survive the Thanos snap.
Uh, so I'm hoping that it's not a 50% purge. I don't think it was.
Right. Let's, let's hope not, but I just thought it was really funny.
That being said, I'm more than happy to blame Thanos for any problems here for with too.
I think everybody is. Uh, all right. I'll let you continue. Sorry.
No, man. That was about all I had. So that was like the perfect time.
All right. Awesome. Uh, sweet. So we'll make this, uh, so who knows what? And by the way, uh, for, for all you guys out there, we may be able to, we probably will be taking, uh, some questions. So if you have, uh, specific questions about stuff, I want you to be able to voice those. Um, we have, uh, Tur Arts, uh, standing by in game. Um, what, are you on Tur Arts or are you?
I am on Tur Arts. I made it super simple.
Okay. So she's on Tur Arts in game. So you can, uh, look her up and, and, uh, and DM her there. Or also, um, we are watching, uh, Navix is watching Twitch chat. So if you have questions there, you can always ask him. Um, of course we won't take those until the end. So hopefully some of those questions may get answered along the way. Um, I think next we can go to Ash. Uh, Ash is our, uh, raid liaison and is also a, uh, major domo. I don't know. Just feeling nostalgia. All right. Uh, so.
I'm happy for you that you get an opportunity to use that sounder again, Pat.
Well, thank you for being here. All right, Ash, why don't you just go ahead?
All right. So, uh, howdy Raiders. Um, just a couple of reminders for me really, gonna keep this short and simple because I seem to have lost my voice yet again, uh, this, uh, this week. Uh, so we recently implemented, uh, allowing, uh, raid teams to have access to their, to the guild bank for, uh, storing their, their mats and such. Uh, I just wanted to remind every raid leader out there that we still have plenty of slots left available. All you have to do is send an email to CTRraids.com or at gmail.com, excuse me, and, uh, request a slot. The only guild that is currently full on their, uh, allocated bank tab slots is Emirus. So if you're in Emirus and need a slot, you'll be probably moved over to one of the other guilds that have extra space. We have like three or four guilds that still have like three slots, which are how many we, we've allocated for each one, uh, left open. So, uh, still got plenty of space for those, those guild bank tabs. Uh, second thing I wanna remind or, or bring up is with, um, all the stuff that's being, the revamping with the website is we're getting our rosters back, uh, functional again. So please make sure that you, as a raid leader, go in and update your roster to, uh, as, uh, up to date as possible. Uh, that will allow, the other thing that we're working to bring back on the website, which is the progression tracker, to properly track progression so that you guys don't have to, uh, send a message to Echelon in Discord, uh, every time you guys get a kill. Uh, that being said, uh, we don't have a timeline for when the progression tracker will be. It likely won't be, um, until at the very soonest, uh, somewhere near the end of the next year. Um, so, cause it's, it's still got a lot of ways to go. There's a lot of things that we have to get in place for that. Uh, so for now, we're still gonna use, uh, the out, out of guild progression site, CTR Progress, that was built by one of our raiders, Taman, uh, raid leaders, excuse me, and then again announcing it to Echelon in case your guild has, your team has a problem with, uh, with that tracking. And the only other thing I wanted to remind folks of was, uh, I know a lot of people, a lot of, a lot of teams are having troubles with recruitment. Uh, it's getting to that point in the expansion where, uh, raiders are needing a little bit of a break. Um, and WoW Progress has, has made, um, their, uh, their pages, uh, usable by teams, not just by guilds now. So that every team can go in there. It's a little complicated to get set up, but once you do get it set up, uh, you can go in there and use WoW Progress for recruitment, um, uh, as an outside source to go along with using Discord, using the in-game channels that we have set up as well as the, the team builder and, uh, uh, for that. Uh, so, uh, other than that, I don't have anything else. So.
Okay. Alrighty. Uh, so, um, yeah, and I do think that WoW Progress is, is gonna, is gonna be good for a lot of teams anyway. So I would really recommend that you go over there and check it out. Um, because now, now that you can actually have raid teams on there, that's beautiful. That's a beautiful thing. Um, so make sure to check that out. And yes, the guild bank, uh, stuff, if you want a, uh, a tab in the guild bank, uh, we can do that for you. It's limited basis, but, uh, we, we can definitely give you a tab and, um, and yeah, so if you want that, check it out. Uh, now we have Tur Arts, uh, our last, our last major domo.
You are having too much fun with this.
Well, everybody else got it. So, you know, I don't wanna, you know, leave you hanging with, without, uh, without a domo. So, uh, but Tur Arts i- is in charge of the events for CTR. So I'll just let you go ahead and, uh, and speak your piece.
Yeah. So first of all, um, as Pat said earlier, we had our sixth anniversary like three months ago and thank you guys so much. I've been, I've been doing all six of them. This was my sixth one too. And you guys always do a great job at coming out and supporting in events. And just thank you for that. So round of applause. Um, what I wanna talk about Discord has a new feature we kind of added. We did it a while, but we haven't had a meeting to talk about it since. Uh, the biggest question or concern I get with events is visibility. We have this great calendar. We put it in game. We try and talk about it in Discord, but we've added a rank. So if you go to the Welcome Wagon channel, it's in the general stuff section. And you type in question mark rank, space, CTR Guild. I don't know if that's capitalization specific, Pat. Do you know?
Yeah, I don't know. I, I, I think you can do it, uh, with or without. I think it works, but.
Worst case, just copy what someone else did and go with that. Um, but it's gonna change you to an awesome blue color because we're Alliance. And it'll allow us to ping you in the CTR Guild stuff. So instead of pinging everyone, cause some people have that suppressed, instead of, um, you know, pinging at here, we can ping this rank specifically. So you can get all the guild haps and stuff like that. So it really is a great feature that allows us to just, uh, ping the guild. Because if you didn't notice already, this isn't just the guild Discord. It's the whole CTR podcast, everything community. So I see people typing in there right now. So go do that. It's exciting. You get a fun blue color too. So who wouldn't want that? The dog's barking. I apologize. Um, the second thing I wanna talk about to kind of piggyback onto Ash's stuff is we are gonna be doing a raid recruitment event. That is gonna be happening May 3rd and 4th. So we're looking at two and a half, three weeks? Is that three weeks from now?
Uh, yeah, I think so.
Three weeks from now? It'll be on the guild calendar here soon. If you are a raid team who is recruiting, I'll have a, um, Google Doc like I always do for you to fill it out. If you're looking for a raid team, this is a great event. There's tons of raid teams that usually show up. Raid teams don't disappoint me. Please show up. So I'm not lying. And you get to kind of find a team. We have all kinds of spots from early morning to afternoon to evening, all times during the week. Um, so it really is a great opportunity for that. So come hang out and do that. Uh, the very last little snippet I have is I am recruiting some more event planners. So if this is your thing where you want to host events, um, we like to keep it in WoW, but we have done some Hearthstone and Overwatch stuff. So you know, if, if you wanna do some of that too, I'm okay with it. Cause I think we, we've talked before, we are a CTR Guild community, but we're also, you know, pro Blizzard. So doing some of those events are, are great. Um, hit me up. You can hit me up in Discord and game. I'm Tur Arts, anywhere you find on the internet. If you see Tur Arts, it is probably me. Um, and let's chat. I'd love to chat. I need more, would like more staff members to, to kinda host some events for people. I think, I'm going through my list, that is everything that I have to cover, minus the fact that in nine months is the seven year anniversary event. So just saying.
That's so funny. It's like every time, you gotta say how far it is to the next one. So, you know.
It's enough time to have a baby. So.
Wow.
I'm not promoting, like, don't.
Wow. That's, that's weird. So if you wanna time it out, everybody. Uh, no. Uh, thank you, T. Uh, thank you very much. Um, and make sure, guys, if you're not already, uh, watching The Converted, which is every other week, um, make sure to check that out, that podcast, which is all about the people, the community of CTR and it, and Barf and T are on that. Uh, and, uh, who else? Who else we got on that show? Uh, Sal?
Sal?
Yeah.
And Ash.
And Ash and, uh, maybe you, whoever, whoever, if you're in the guild. If you're in the guild and you wanna be on it, you just hit them up. And, uh, sure, you could talk. There've been, there've been countless guests on that show. So, uh, and it's, it's really fun. So check it out. The Converted. Um, and so I think that that is kind of the overview. We're still working on some of these things. So like the website stuff, we're still working on a lot of the backend stuff and we're trying to, you may see some changes soon on the front end. Um, hopefully it won't be too jarring and, or look too dumb or whatever, but, uh, you never know. Cause I'm, I'm leading the way with the website stuff. So it might look dumb. Who knows? Um, but yes, we'll see some new rules coming around, uh, new policies, not necessarily new policies, but a new look to the policies. Um, and, uh, yes, we have the guild bank. We have the new level requirements to get into the guild, which is 15 and up plus out of your starting zone. Um, that would be great. Um, and I think those are the big things anyway. Uh, so if you guys have questions, now is the time to ask them. Um, and if you don't get a chance to ask them today, you can always, uh, go over to the emails and, uh, hit us up, CTRofficers@gmail.com. That's the big one, um, that you guys will want to know. Um, from there, we can pretty much send it wherever we need to go. Um, whether it's over to the raid liaison specifically or over to events specifically, um, whatever. And we can make sure that those guys, uh, get ahold of it. Um, also you can hit us up on our Discord. If you don't know what our Discord is, it's up on the screen right now and it is discord converters.com. That's the URL that you'll need to get to, to get to the automatic invite, uh, for the Discord. So there. And of course, all of the guild stuff, guild converters.com. Um, that'll lead you to the calendar and you can see what's up. Do we have any questions, guys?
I have a couple too. Do you guys have any? Navix?
I have, uh, three questions from Twitch.
Okay, let's, Tur Arts, why don't you go first?
Yes. So, uh, point of clarification real quick. I had a question about in-game calendar. Um, we do not use the in-game calendar because it is actually 10 calendars. I have to go into each guild and post the event and then who signed up first, if it's a limited event. So we make announcements in guild chat. On that website that Pat just mentioned is a calendar of events. Um, so that's where you wanna be looking because we've tried, I've, I've been at this for five and a half years. We've tried a lot of different things with that in-game calendar and there really isn't a good thing.
It's tough.
It, yeah, there just isn't that, that doesn't take up a lot of time. Um, so just a point of clarification there.
Right. Um, okay. Navix, you have a question?
From Terra Chaos or Terra Chaos. Are there any classic plans? Because I'm super pumped for Classic Summer and I'm hoping to do it with CTR.
I am super pumped for Classic as well. I wanna figure out, um, a couple of things before we actually make a commitment on that. Um, but yeah, I, I, I really do wanna make a, um, a classic guild, uh, as long as it, uh, well, we'll figure all that stuff out. So, so, but yes, that, that is definitely, I think, in the back of our head. And I, I just wanna figure out some more information before I actually dive in and, and do all that stuff. Cause I don't know exactly, um, how it'll work if we have multiple guilds. I don't know if they're gonna have the guild requirements that they initially had, which was up to 10,000 characters in one guild? If you remember those days?
Oh, yeah.
They used to have a, uh.
Oh, that'd be so nice.
They used to have a 10,000 player guild limit. And that was like, oh my God, that would be great. So if they have that, I'm like, oh yeah, just one guild to rule them all. That would be awesome. So, um, but I don't know how any of that stuff works. As soon as we see, uh, like an alpha or a beta test or something like that, and we can get in there, in there and monkey around with it a bit, um, then I think we'll have a better idea of, of what we can actually do. Um, cause I don't wanna, I don't wanna have necessarily a different experience in Classic. From a guild point, I don't wanna have a different experience guild-wise in Classic than I do in, uh, in retail. I guess is what they're calling it. Um, so yeah, I just wanna make sure that that's as close as possible. So there. Uh, Tur Arts, you have another question?
Yeah. So, um, what's the future of the Guild BlizzCon party? Are the Officers' Party planners meeting soon to discuss possible options? So do we have any, anything on this yet?
No. I, I don't. Uh, since I have moved to, uh, since I have moved to California, uh, things are kind of, uh, very wiggly for me. So I have not been able to, uh, get a, get a set point anywhere. And I don't know exactly, I know that we were talking with some other, um, folks to, to maybe do a combo event or something along those lines with multiple groups getting into the mix. Um, there's been a lot of chatter, but I don't know if there's anything set right now. So.
I think to, not to like step over you, but we don't know when BlizzCon is yet. Like we have rumors.
Yeah.
We always have rumors. Once that date gets set, there's a lot of stuff in the air that, that I know. And there's probably even more that you know, that will have some more set stuff once we have a date and some of that stuff comes down from the air.
Yes, but of course, uh, look to early, early November, uh, for, for BlizzCon essentially. I mean, if, if it, if it goes by all the other times, early, early November is probably when it will land. So we'll see BlizzCon there. We'll see what we can do as far as meetups and, and stuff like that. If not, if, if not like an event like we've had, um, uh, in previous years, we could do something like we, like we did last year where we have, you know, kind of some, some cool events where, where not maybe everybody comes to, but you can meet up with your guildies and all that kinda stuff. We will definitely have something where you can meet up with your guildies. Uh, Navix?
Everybody get your bingo cards ready, cause here comes the free square. Horde Guild, maybe? Yes, from Exklam.
Uh, never officially. How's that?
Well, it's different from officially never.
Yeah, it's different.
We've upgraded.
Uh, yeah, right. Uh, so we are an Alliance Guild. Uh, we will remain an Alliance Guild. Uh, although I know, I know people really wanna check out the story and, and have checked out the story on the Horde side. Um, and for that, there are so many different guilds that are, that are so much, um, so much, where there are a lot of people and a lot of activity going on. And that's really what I think that all of our folks want, is they want a lot of activity going on in the guild. Um, so on Horde side, I would, I would say, if you really want to, um, go check out some other guilds, AIE on Eastern Ring, um, there's Blood of the Scribe on, um, now I forgot the name of the, the.
Boulderfist.
Boulderfist. There we go. Um, and, uh, you know, those are, those are two large guilds that have some different things going on with them. Um, so, yeah. Uh, anybody else? That's all I got.
Those are the only two I know.
Right.
I had one, I have one more. It just says, um, and I, this might be for Ash. Uh, this is a question regarding team pages. Uh, VazDK wanted to know, will a team pages be able to be updated? I know my team lead has tried to update it a few times and it hasn't. So Ash.
Uh, so if he's, if he's asking about the, um, the rosters, the, the team builder that is on our site, yes, that is being, uh, in, in the process of being fixed. Um, there were a lot of issues that happened because Blizzard changed their API, uh, and it messed with a whole bunch of stuff. Um, that is being slowly worked through. Um, and basically anybody that, that, if the team leader wants somebody to have access to try to fix the team or add to the roster or whatever, um, they just need to let us know, uh, and we can set that person as a raid assist. Um, so, but the best thing to do, uh, if you are having trouble with that is to email us at CTRraids@gmail.com. Let us know so that we can point Maccus on the right direction so that he can take a look and figure out what's going on.
Yeah, the, uh, the changes that Blizzard made to the API were, were pretty big. Uh, or at least for us, they, they managed to screw everything up pretty badly. So kinda working through a lot of that stuff, which is what we were talking about earlier. Um, any other questions? Any other questions from, from anybody that you can see there, guys?
One more, Barf, this is for you. Someone asked, so for clarification, a second application really should never be denied? And I think they're asking, like if you're asked to create one?
A second application should never be denied? I suppose. So the way it works is the first time you apply, that goes into our database and stays there. And then every time that you make a new character and you want to bring that new character into the guild, that character gets added by, like the, the officer who's handling that adds that character to that application. So like, there's no need to submit more paperwork on the part of the player.
Right, it's, it's almost like you're creating a username for us to be able to go in through and, and say, oh, you've added another character, here's the other character.
Yeah, basically. So, you know, when you, when you decide, oh, I'm going to make that new Lightforged Draenei that I've been meaning to make, and then you, you make them and you get into the game and you find that officer and you, hey, I want to get into the guild, that's really all the work that you need to do on your end. If the officer, the only time that a new application would be necessary is if the officer turns around and says, yeah, you know, just as a function of like some of the things that have happened in the database side, it looks like your application either was broken at some point or had to be deleted for, you know, coding reasons or some kind of thing like that, then they would ask you to make a new one, but that's really the only time you would ever need to make a new one. The only other thing that would be denied that I could think of is if you had a name that was not appropriate for the guild. That's the only reason I could think of a, of a denied type, type situation.
Right.
But that would be a denial on the, the character basis, not on the application base.
Right, 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 that's a good clarification. That is a denial to the name of the character and not to the player. So the player is still welcome, everything is groovy, it's just that the name of the character is a problem and then maybe we need to work with that a little bit.
Yep, because I was, so I was told, we wouldn't have these problems if we didn't have standards. And I'm like, yeah, you're, you're right.
True.
If we didn't have standards, I mean, then everybody, sure, just come on in, you know, whatever, but we, unfortunately for some people, we do have standards and they're, it's a low bar, I'll admit, it's a low bar, but you do have to meet or exceed those standards to be, to be let into the guild and stay here.
You are selling us really well.
It's a low bar, but you just have to elevate your game just a little bit, just a little bit.
Sort of in conjunction with that, with that question was another one that I saw come through chat a little ways ago. It was actually answered within chat, but I wanted to sort of say it out loud in case there was any like listeners or like people who weren't actually watching the Twitch chat who happened to see it. Rem came in and asked what the time slots were for when you could track down a greeter. Used to be, once upon a time, there were certain specific times of the week that you would go into CTR LFO and find an officer to get you into the guild. That's no longer the case, it hasn't been for some time now, but it's always sort of said that on the rules that Pat was talking about earlier that we're going to be changing and like sort of clearing and clarifying and then sort of simplifying. The greeters, I forget how many there are, there's probably 20 or 25 of them right now. And they, they are working in CTR LFO off and on all week long. You're not, it's, it's never 100% coverage of the entire week, but it's also never, you have to log in between 3 o'clock and 6 o'clock on this certain day, and if you're not there on that day, you don't get your invite. Like that's just not how it works anymore. So if you're looking for an invite, it doesn't matter what time of the day, what time of the week it is, log on to the game, go to the CTR LFO channel in, like just type slash join, space, CTR LFO, that's the channel you want to go to, means looking for officer LFO, and ask to see if there's an officer around. And if somebody's there keeping an eye on the channel, they'll reach out to you.
Right.
If you can't find anybody there, the next place to look would be in the Discord, we have a Looking for Officer channel in the Discord.
Yep.
But you don't have to wait for a certain time of day, and you don't have to wait for a certain time of week to track down an officer. Where, there's enough of us now where we're not limited to just a couple times here and there and wherever else.
Right. And so, yes, and make sure to check out Discord too, you know, especially if you're, if you're looking for teammates, or if you're looking for other members to join your team. You know, there's all sorts of recruitment possibilities there. We do have, you know, that's where, if you want to be involved in one of our events, that's where you can get on Discord there and, and when, when the events are going on, or, or you can find out more, doesn't really matter. But do make sure to check out our Discord for all of the, for all of the different guild stuff that is available. And it is in CTR Guild stuff under that heading. So check that out. Do use it and, because I mean, that's kind of become part of the gamer life, right? Discord is now a part of it, so we have to change to do all that stuff. So yes, if you're looking to get in and you can't find anybody in CTR LFO, head over to Discord and that should be your next step and just say, hey, can somebody let me in? And I'm sure that, you know, our officers are generally looking at that stuff, so regularly. Any other questions out there, guys?
I had one about the forums, the forums are dead.
The forums are very dead. If you're hoping to get on the forums, feel free to peruse the graveyard of the forums.
Lots of great deals on Nikes out there apparently right now.
There are.
Have to go there and delete some of that stuff.
I gotta remember what my password is over there. It has been a long time since the forums have been a thing. Yes, long live Discord. And then when Discord goes away and something else is being used, then we'll use that. It's just the, that's, you gotta be able to shift your mindset through the, through the time. Okay, well, if that is everything, as far as questions and stuff like that, I, I think we'll call it here, but thanks Tur Arts, thanks Barf, thanks Ash, thank you Navix as well, for helping us out. And thank you for joining us for the CTR Town Hall. As you can see, make sure to check out guildconverttoraid.com for all of the upcoming events and, and what have yous there and, and to also do the raid builder stuff, check out team pages and look at different raid teams and if they're, if they're recruiting. You can check out our Discord, discordconverttoraid.com, that's the URL you'll need to get to the Discord. And if you have any questions or need help with anything and you can't find us on Discord for, or in game for whatever reason, you can always email us, ctrofficers@gmail.com, and then we can get that to whoever that needs to go to. Thank you once again, everybody, and I guess that is it. So we will see you next time, we will see you in game. Until then, bye-bye.